The meeting is now resumed. Are there any apologies? Council Collier.
I move that councillor Griffith Bree is an apology and granted a leave of absence.
Thank you. It has been moved by councillor Collier that councillor Griffith be absent from the meeting and seconded by councillor Strum be granted leave from today's meeting. All those in favour say aye, those against no. The ayes have it. I now call on the leader of the opposition councillor Jarrod Cassidy to address the chamber. Councillor Cassidy.
Thank you Chair. Wednesday's budget may have been the first for a new council term, but what we saw was more of the same from Adrian Schrinner and his LMP regime. The budget delivery isn't just a bunch of numbers, it shows what this council's priorities are and what their values are and what the intention for the future is. I had a look through the Lord Mayor's speech to see where some of his priorities are. When I searched for the word footpath, it came up just once. Drainage, not at all. Bike ways, he mentioned once. When it comes to the housing crisis councillor Schrinner mentioned housing five times, granted, but turned a blind eye to those sleeping rough. He did not mention the word homeless once at all.
Shame.
What did he mention? Well, he pointed the blame to others an awful lot. In councillor Schrinner's budget delivery, he referred to the Labour Party four times, the federal government nine times, and he passed the buck to the state government forty-two times.
That's ridiculous.
Unfortunately for the people of Brisbane, this isn't even a budget anymore. Funding allocations for projects have been removed and what we are left with is a rough cost estimate at the start of the year, which is totally flexible throughout the year. We see previous promises broken, election commitments vanishing, and big rates increases to fund lavish parties, all while suburban investment falls off a cliff. The Schrinner administration lost their way some time ago. Their priorities are all wrong and they're getting worse. And residents right across the suburbs of Brisbane will suffer because of it. The Lord Mayor and his regime use one phrase a lot lately, sensible savings. We've come to learn that is now code for cuts. The LMP have cut projects, the LMP have sacked staff, and the LMP have cut council services. With close to 500, fewer permanent staff now than there were six months ago, council services are being wound back. Environment centres are closing their doors, waste services are being cancelled, and concrete orders are being cut back. It's no wonder that councillor Schrinner has left out the figures, so people can no longer see where their rates are being spent or not spent, more to the point. When you look past the spin Lord Mayor puts on this budget, it's full of cuts, neglect, and gross mismanagement. The budget cuts we saw in October last year meant less community grants, less tree planting, less playground upgrades, less drainage projects, and many other missed opportunities. We had hoped this budget would restore funding for basic services, but I guess we shouldn't have held out much hope. It's another blow to residents across Brisbane who expect basic services to be delivered across the suburbs of Brisbane. Their rates continue to rise and now they are more than ever paying more and getting less from this LMP regime. The Lord Mayor just doesn't think value for money is important. Instead, his LMP councillors putting cash into things like luxury overseas travel, bridge openings, catering for civic cabinet meetings, and inner city projects, many of which he and his LMP councillors claim are things they shouldn't be doing anyhow. It's time we had an adult conversation about where councils' priorities should be, and the Lord Mayor's budget delivery on Wednesday was not it unfortunately. I'm not saying it's easy, times are tough, but it takes strong leadership to hold ourselves accountable and make things better for the people we represent. This LMP mayor sends out rates bills each quarter. He takes your money, Brisbane, and he tells you he's spending it wisely, but residents are learning the hard way that they can't trust a single word that this Lord Mayor says.
That's right.
Under this LMP regime, rates have increased by close to 4% on average this year. But what the Lord Mayor didn't mention in his speech amongst the blame and self pity was the rivers of gold the ratepayers and renters of Brisbane are to his regime. Rates revenue is up almost 6% this year, not based on growth in new properties, but increasing income of existing ratepayers. And fees and charges revenue is up a whopping 10% this year. When you go and bury a loved one, when you go to register your dog, when you start a small business, or seek to build a house, Adrian Schrinner and his LMP colleagues will be reaching into your pockets and rummaging around for more cash. And I'll tell you how he's getting it. If you're a small business, your advertising fees have gone up by 51%.
Oh my gosh.
It's no wonder that live music venues are closing down left, right, and centre. Permits for amplified music venues are going up by 31% this year. It's also bad news if you hold a market stall or similar. Temporary food stall licences are up 30%, and if you have a commercial street stall, you'll have to pay 150% more just to set up.
Wow.
You might like to sit down for this one, but not on a footpath, of course, because it's going to cost a whopping 667% more to get a footpath dining permit if you're a small business in Brisbane.
Wow.
And on top of that, the LMP have thrown in a $111 special renewal fee, just to kick small businesses while they're down.
That's terrible.
He's also squeezing more money out of ratepayers. Not only has the Lord Mayor announced a rates increase, he's also going to charge an extra 50% on card payment fees. So every ratepayer who uses their credit card or debit card up to four times a year to pay their rates will now cop an even bigger hit because of card payment charges. Last year, there were 224,000 card payments processed by council. No wonder he's increasing that fee, he sees it as a goldmine. The Lord Mayor says he's keeping rates as low as he can, but what he doesn't say is he's stinging ratepayers and business owners through sneaky increases of fees and charges to keep revenue streams up. Now, the Lord Mayor is well versed at telling tall tales, but it's how he spends residents' money that tells the real story. The question residents are asking themselves is, am I getting value for money? They pay their rates and each year they increase, but what level of service do they see in return for their hard-earned? According to this Lord Mayor, it's a choice between service delivery or big infrastructure projects. It's a choice between the metro or keeping environment centres open. A choice between fancy parties on green bridges or keeping road crews employed. I have to say, I couldn't agree with the Lord Mayor more about this. It is a choice, he just made the wrong one.
Totally.
There's no question that we're in a cost living crisis and this rates hike will tip some families over the edge. It will cause additional stress to households. I really feel for those families in Gibung who will see their rates up close to 7%. Every single ratepayer in Gibung now has to find another $141 to help fund councillor Adams and councillor Howard's first-class trip to Paris.
Ridiculous.
Or over at Chirmside West, with an increase of almost 7%. Those ratepayers and renters will now fork out an extra $150 each, so councillor Murphy and the Lord Mayor can have a special party together on the Kangaroo Point Bridge. And imagine living in Holland Park and finding out you have to fork out another $173, but then finding out your local LMP councillor still won't fix the Marshall and Tui Road intersection.
What a disgrace.
And just think, over in Bald Hills, a suburb that was hard hit by the floods in 2022, those residents now need to find an extra £100 each. You know what they want over there? They want better drainage, an SES depot at Bracken Ridge, but instead what they get is more Living in Brisbane newsletters. And here's what a couple of those residents had to say about the Lord Mayor's Living in Brisbane newsletter. Neil said, mine goes straight from the letterbox to the bin. Michelle said, is there anyone that actually reads it, apart from LMP branch members? Mine goes straight to the bin. I like this one. Cherylan said, those Living in Brisbane newsletters are an absolute waste of paper and an environmental joke.
Yep.
We agree with you all. The decision of LMP politicians to prioritise themselves for so long has set the scene for a deteriorating budget which has led to this horror show. It's becoming clearer, and clearer and clearer, over the last month leading up to the delivery of this cost estimate budget, that the LMP have left Brisbane quite broke.
Yep.
Nowhere is it clearer than in the area of public transport funding. We've seen the extraordinary situation where this LMP council signed up to a deal with the state government, where council, the ratepayers of Brisbane, would wear the cost and risk of delivering the Metro bus project. And council would cover the operational cost of Metro buses. This is the deal that the LMP sought from the state government, but now at the last minute, they've said they can't afford it. And if the state government doesn't bail them out, it won't open in November. How convenient. We support the calls for more growth funding for bus routes, more services in the suburbs of Brisbane. We don't support this LMP regime's political campaign designed to target the Labour state government in the lead-up to an election and take that funding away from services to plug the Metro black hole.
Pathetic.
The LMP knew what they were getting into.
They did.
The people of Brisbane shouldn't be used as pawns in a political game that council is now playing. Council officers shouldn't be used as pawns in the LMP's political games. Week after week, we've heard LMP councillor after LMP councillor line up and criticise the state government and say they'll use negotiations around funding as a political issue to support individual LMP candidates in the state election.
What a joke.
That's pretty sick.
Yeah.
Congestion in this city is a huge problem.
Yep.
And I commend, we commend, the state government on their 50 cent fare policy which kicks in in August. The Brisbane Labour team, of course, laid the groundwork heading into the March election for this idea with half-price bus fares. But this LMP council continue to sit on their hands, fail to take any action, and of course blame others.
Yep.
The Brisbane Labour team want more people to be catching public transport, but from the LMP's response, it's not really clear that they actually want the same thing. But getting more people onto public transport also requires improved access to train stations and bus stops through increased funding for footpaths, bikeways, to connect more people to public transport in their neighbourhoods. We see new footpath construction, as anaemic as it was over the last two budgets, entirely dry up now. There are just 43 broken and dangerous footpaths and bikeways being repaired in this budget, out of the thousands languishing on that list.
Shame.
What we needed to see was a greater investment in basic council work.
That's right.
Instead, Adrian Schrinner and his team have announced a 20% cut in the supply of concrete for footpaths, drainage projects, and curbing and channeling. Footpaths in Brisbane are the most important active transport assets we have. They are the infrastructure that most kids learn to ride their bikes on. They help people with mobility issues get around and they fundamentally connect our communities. Under the LMP's watch, our city will be a crumbling mess by the time the 2032 Olympics rolls around.
Yep.
What we do hear from this LMP council in regards to public transport is their constant praise for the Brisbane Metro project, of course. This is the project that was, we all remember, announced in 2016, a long time ago. Still not delivered, it's like Groundhog Day in here, every single budget. The project that was meant to cost $944 million, but now at a whopping $1.7 billion with no end in sight. Recently, we learnt that this council ordered the 60 Metro buses for the Brisbane Metro network despite only needing 36 to run on the service they had designed, the small network they had designed. Those additional 24 buses will cost the ratepayers of Brisbane more than $100 million. More than we needed to. Doesn't sound very sensible to me.
No.
We still don't know what the plan is for those additional buses. There's a second depot out at Fitzgibbon been flagged, but we yet to see a business case. And in fact, we've been told by the Lord Mayor himself that he doesn't see the need for a business case for a major infrastructure project at all anymore. Perhaps this council doesn't actually want to know the cost benefit ratio for this ever-expanding project.
I doubt it.
Now, it's the same story, of course, when it comes to the LMP's green bridges. What started out as five new pedestrian bridges across the Brisbane River have ended up at two or less than two, I guess. Three have been cut, and those remaining two bridges have taken up more than half of the original budget. The Kangaroo Point Green Bridge project has blown out by $100 million and will now cost $300 million, we think. We know the project costs will blow out more because the party boys are in charge. Just last week, the Lord Mayor admitted the opening for the Kangaroo Point Bridge was going to be an expensive one. Councillor Murphy said he and the Lord Mayor wanted to throw a special party, a big party, because they wanted to impress the Prime Minister. Bless. This LMP council spent $92,000 on the bridge opening for the Breakfast Creek Bike Way extension. And just imagine the cost of the Kangaroo Point Bridge opening. Maybe, maybe they could get a few tips from councillor Adams on where to get the best lobster and champagne and caviar in Brisbane these days.
Love the fancy party.
And when you think about it, these expensive openings, Chair, are all happening on bridges while people sleep in tents beneath them. The budget confirms that the LMP have decided to stick to their go-slow plan to get, to help get people out of housing insecurity too. The LMP have completely dropped the ball when it comes to Brisbane's housing crisis. We know this mammoth task will take action from all levels of government. Council has the power to make changes to take steps in the right direction. More importantly, we know there are steps that local government can take to make immediate changes. We know we need to act fast and to act collaboratively. What we've seen from the LMP is a council moving at a glacial pace. We have supported amendments the LMP brought this week to the planning scheme because we are willing to put politics aside to ensure more people get a roof over their heads. We wish the LMP would do the same and work with us as well. Brisbane Labour have suggested some sensible solutions, but the LMP have told us they're doing enough already. Well, it's not enough. Brisbane's housing crisis should not be a pawn in this LMP regime's political games. Brisbane Labour has called for a number of measures. Increasing rates discounts for community housing providers to assist in maintaining current stock, decreasing infrastructure charges, and development application fees for community housing providers, increasing funding for homelessness services through councils' pathways out of homelessness grants, open unused council land and buildings, and partner with organisations to facilitate emergency shelter. Less talk, less blame on others, more immediate action.
Yep.
Tent cities are popping up in every corner of Brisbane. People are struggling to find suitable roofs over their heads. We need policies that promote affordable housing development and offer immediate assistance to those right around Brisbane who need it. And to date, devastatingly, we've still seen more infrastructure charge discounts awarded to five-star hotel developers than community housing providers. We've seen millions of dollars in extra revenue come to council as part of the crackdown on short-stay accommodation, but none of that money has gone to supporting the delivery of more affordable housing. What's more, we find out in this budget that this LMP mayor has introduced a brand-new $15,000 fee to build units.
What?
So the Lord Mayor says he's giving with one hand, but he's taking with the other. This new fee will drive up the cost of developing units in Brisbane. Let that sink in for a minute. I'm not sure if LMP councillors realised that was happening in this budget.
Did they know?
The Lord Mayor made a big announcement about developer discounts for building units a few months ago. I wonder why he didn't make a big announcement out bringing in a brand-new development application charge worth a whopping $15,000 per development.
Wow.
Talk about a triumph of spin over substance. This budget does not allocate sufficient resources to support homeless shelters, transitional housing programmes, or other essential services that help people regain stability and independence. It's disappointing that Adrian Schrinner and his team continue to pass the buck when it comes to critical issues across Brisbane, and the housing crisis is of course no exception to that. Whilst many across Brisbane continue to struggle in this cost of living crisis, the Lord Mayor and his team spend in ways that could only be admired by drunken sailors. Despite this, LMP council's $400 million cut to the budget in October last year, and another $480 million reduction in suburban expenditure, all in the name of their sensible savings, we are seeing gobsmacking spends by the Lord Mayor and his team.
Yep.
We've recently learnt that two LMP councillors and other BCC staff will attend Paris for the Olympics costing ratepayers more than 120 grand for that trip. Now, this spend is despite the fact that council is only responsible for one of 10 key delivery areas for the Brisbane 2032 Games. Essentially, council are spending 120 grand to go to Paris to find out it's important to pick up the rubbish during the Games. Now, that's also on top of the $220,000 already spent on Olympic-related travel since 2022.
It's lavish.
That didn't form part of the so-called sensible savings.
Of course not.
Now, we've already talked about a lot lately the $92,000 cost of the Breakfast Creek bridge opening. We're of course keeping an eye on the Kangaroo Point Bridge costs as well as the Brisbane Metro and Victoria Park project blowouts to ensure that Brisbane residents and ratepayers know exactly where their rates are going, because this LMP regime are doing everything humanly possible to keep those figures hidden in this cost estimate budget.
Secrets.
Brisbane Labour councillors will continue to hold the LMP council to account, particularly as we begin to see the aftermath of this budget's cuts, including staff layoffs and insufficient delivery of essential services in the suburbs. At the end of the day, the lavish spending the LMP does is at the detriment of our suburbs. That's what I can't really get my head around with this budget. Providing services, maintenance, and basic infrastructure is the bread and butter of local government.
Yep.
Rates, rubbish, roads. It's not about fancy parties or overseas trips or expensive inner-city projects. That's not what we are here for. The everyday lives of everyday people across Brisbane are being impacted because of the cuts this LMP council continues to make. Broken footpaths taking too long to be repaired for mums with prams, locals on scooters, bikes and wheelchairs. The repair rate won't get any better with the cuts this budget offers up. Potholes on suburban roads for cars to swerve and dodge. What we won't see, I guess, going forward is the miraculously timed fixing of potholes like we did during the election when we brought attention to those. Politics at its finest. There's damaged playgrounds that local kids are going to outgrow before they're even fixed. Long grass waiting to be mowed and heading into another summer with less mozzie spraying than before. Our community sporting clubs are crying out for upgrades and maintenance and more financial support just to keep the lights on. But the Lord Mayor continues to focus on one park, one inner-city park, Victoria Park. That project was announced at $83 million. It's now blown out to $160 million in just three years. And now the Lord Mayor wants to put a $3.6 billion stadium there. There won't be much left of the park, and that's just the beginning of this project. But of course, in this budget and budgets going forward, the true cost of that project is hidden from the ratepayers of Brisbane.
Of course, it's the LMP one.
We don't need hundreds of millions of dollars spent on a single inner-city park, Victoria Park. We need that funding shared across Brisbane.
Yep.
Now, the LMP have said savings needed to be made in these tough times. Well, how about you start with Victoria Park instead of local drainage projects? Our suburbs will be less accessible and desirable for residents under Adrian Schrinner's watch. To make matters worse, the cuts will also mean cuts to council staff conducting this basic work. Additional staffing cuts would follow last year's 25% reduction to the road paving crews resulting in less road maintenance across our suburbs. We know from the LMP's own figures that hundreds of permanent staff positions are now left vacant, disappearing, meaning too many council staff are doing more work than they are being paid for. The budget just reconfirms that under the LMP, our suburbs are being neglected and basic services are being cut. It's baffling to think that the LMP say it's a good idea to cut back on basic maintenance when there are so many broken footpaths, fractured roads, and inadequate drainage systems around Brisbane. The obsession that the LMP have for their big inner-city projects has sucked the budget for basic maintenance totally dry. The need for funding is growing, rates revenue is growing, fees and charges revenue is growing, but the LMP are only cutting. Labour and council has and always will be about the suburbs, all about service delivery, and all about the people.
That's right.
We wouldn't be pouring billions into a few inner-city projects. We would be investing in park upgrades, footpath repairs, drainage projects, busting congestion on road projects in the suburbs of Brisbane.
Yeah.
Parks would be mowed on time. Streets would have footpaths, and we would prioritise active transport infrastructure. We would be investing record amounts in suburban drainage with many areas still being rebuilt after flood damage two years ago. Labour would be using the Olympics as a catalyst to upgrade community sporting clubs and invest in affordable housing, not as a PR tool for self-promotion like this LMP mayor is doing, jumping in and out and in of Olympic planning groups when he needs a media headline.
Of course.
In the lead-up to this budget, the Brisbane Labour team, as local councillors, requested funding for a number of key projects in the suburbs of Brisbane. It's almost not worth doing these days because the Lord Mayor just doesn't seem to be interested much. It's like he said the other night, he is a part-time mayor now because he thinks there are good bits to his job and there are other bits he doesn't bother with anymore.
Yep.
And it turns out he has a part-time relationship with truth as well. It's not what someone says that reveals their priorities, it's what they do. It's clear that the Lord Mayor and his LMP administration are focused on themselves. If the LMP's priorities were the people of Brisbane, we would see record investments in projects to combat the housing crisis. We would see cuts to advertising budgets, not cuts to council staff. We would see footpaths being fixed within days, not cuts to the supply of concrete to do that work. We wouldn't be seeing hundreds of thousands of dollars spent on parties for bridge openings while people sleep in tents underneath them. And we definitely wouldn't be spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on unnecessary overseas travel. This budget confirms that this LMP regime is completely out of touch.
Completely.
And most remarkably, Chair, in fact, for the first time in my nine years here as a councillor, I was contacted by an LMP councillor who told me just how disappointed they are with this budget and what it delivered for their community. Pretty extraordinary stuff. Though ultimately, more money than ever is coming through rates, through fees, and through charges to this council, but Adrian Schrinner continues to slash basic services, the bread and butter of council. The people of Brisbane deserve so much better than what they're getting from this tired old LMP council. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Cassidy. I will now call on Civic Cabinet Chair of the Finance and City Governance Committee councillor Fiona Cunningham to reply. Councillor Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's my great honour to stand here and speak in support of yet another Brisbane City Council budget handed down by Lord Mayor Adrian Schrinner. Madam Chair, this budget is about honouring our commitments to the people of Brisbane, who once again entrusted us with their support in March. It's about living within our means and keeping our costs down, so we don't have to pass on costs to residents. It's about seeing through our transformational projects to keep Brisbane moving, like Brisbane Metro, the Kangaroo Point Bridge, and the Moghl Road Corridor upgrade. And it's about making Brisbane's lifestyle even better while planning for the And it's about making Brisbane's lifestyle even better while planning for the future. We can only do this, though, through strong financial management and keeping our budget balanced. And that's exactly what we have done. The past few years have thrown up a number of significant challenges for all of us, from a pandemic to a flood, to significant internal and now international migration to Brisbane. These events and factors have affected our city greatly and they have certainly put our assets and our finances under significant strain here in Brisbane. When you combine that with significant growth in the cost of council's core inputs, while at the same time needing to lessen the burden on residents doing it tough, these past few years have not been easy for anyone and local councils are no exception. Strong leadership, having the right priorities, has been critical to navigating these challenging times. When presented with these challenges, the only option is responsible financial management. And this side of the chamber has a long track record of delivering strong and disciplined financial management on behalf of the rate payers of Brisbane. Madam Chair, a textbook example of this has been our approach to borrowings and the management of our cash reserves. We've heard Councillor Cassidy really latch on to this topic of late. He thinks he's on to a winner, but all he's done is show us how clueless he truly is when it comes to matters of finance. So for once again, I'll correct the record for him. I hope he doesn't think I'm lecturing him, Madam Chair, because he does get quite sensitive about that. Council has had a working capital facility for many years. However, because it had quite limiting conditions attached to it, we'd never used it. So in November 2022, council sought an amendment to these conditions from none other than the Honourable Cameron Dick, Treasurer of Queensland. Doing this was based on advice from Queensland Treasury Corporation and it meant that Brisbane would now align with what other councils do. The whole point of making this change is to allow us to draw on short-term borrowings at a lower interest rate. This means we can delay the drawdown of our approved annual borrowings each year, which, if Councillor Cassidy can follow the bouncing ball, means we can more cost-effectively manage cash in a high-interest rate environment. Councillor Cassidy seems to think that council should build up a big reserve of cash and just sit on it, while at the same time putting our expenses on a credit card and racking up a big interest bill. It's absolutely ludicrous, Madam Chair. The working capital facility allows us to actively manage cash and draw down when required, rather than paying high-interest rates for cash that may not be needed. Our approach meant that in 2223 financial year, we were able to reduce our annual long-term borrowings by $176 million. In the current year, we've been able to delay the drawdown of our annual borrowings until mid-June, 11 and a half months into the financial year. Madam Chair, can I place on my record, on the record, my thanks to the corporate treasury team in council who have made an extraordinary effort to do this? Their management of council's finances has saved our rate payers over $10 million in interest costs and will save us $85 million over the repayment term. If that's not a sensible saving, I don't know what is. The other myth that's being put out there by those opposite, Madam Chair, is that somehow there are no numbers inside this year's quite hefty budget book. Well, obviously, that's quite plain wrong. Everyone can see through the confected outrage. If we had a dollar for every time those opposite talked about the alleged death of democracy at City Hall, there'd be enough money for Councillor Cassidy to put out another one of his self-promotional newsletters in Deegan Wolf. All we have done is align our budget disclosure with that of other local governments and Queensland Government departments. Madam Chair, I'm happy to share some examples to explain to the chamber. Let's start with the budget of Councillor Cassidy's political hero, Morton Bay Mayor Peter Flannery. How much of a breakdown do you think is provided in their budget documents? Well, I won't leave you in suspense. It's all here on page nine. Let's have a look. Our vibrant communities, expenditure, $214 million. Our healthy environments, expenditure, $129 million. Our well-planned places, expenditure, $208 million. What about the state government? It's much bigger than Brisbane City Council. Well, Madam Chair, in the actual appropriation bill, over $90 billion in spending is broken down over just two pages. Let's have a look. Here's an example. Department of Education, $19.1 billion. That seems like a lot of money that Minister DiPharma is responsible for. There has to be a breakdown, surely. There is, Madam Chair. Let me read it to you. Service delivery statement. Education, broken down this way. Early childhood education and care, $644 million. School of educa- school education, $13.27 billion. Total expenses, $13.9 billion. Administered expenses, $5.6 billion. That's it. That's the breakdown, Madam Chair. Now... What about the last budget that was produced by those opposite? Let's have a look at that. Talk about no but, no pro- no numbers, there's actually no projects. The Suburban Works Programme did not exist at all. It is a joke. Our budget book, on the other hand, is more detailed and much more transparent, Madam Chair. It has been said in this place before that program budget adoption meant that the budget was a slush fund with a fairy wish list. Well, the last Labor budget didn't even have a fairy wish list, Madam Chair. As I've said, we're simply aligning our budgets with what is done elsewhere. It's also important, as it will greatly support the critical transition of it to our new ERP, reducing complexity for the organisation. For all the claims of a budget with no numbers, Councillor Cassidy found plenty of numbers to put in his media release, which was blasted out barely an hour after the budget was handed down. The only issue was that none of the numbers he cooked up made any sense and in many cases didn't actually align with his own rhetoric. For example, our capital spend profile has been no secret. It has been clear in the budget for some time that capital spend would trend down in 2425 as we come to the business end of some of our major projects. And in fact, the proposed capital spend for the coming year is higher than what was forecast in last year's published budget book and at the third budget review. Again, Councillor Cassidy, good with the scaremongering, not so good with the numbers. We know he will continue to cede fear among council's workforce egged on by his union masters. But the facts are this. Through our agreement, permanent employees have job security through no-force redundancies and associated arrangements. Through the Industrial Relations Act, modern awards and our agreement, council must and does consult with employees and unions if there are changes which could have an effect on employees. We consulted on changes to recruitment last year and were upfront from the start. But Labor will only ever see progress and success through the prism of spending. They think that if they're spending more, if you're hiring extra staff, this must somehow equal success. We on this side of the chamber see things very differently. It's actually about outcomes, Madam Chair, achieving outcomes as efficiently as possible. Councillor Cassidy and his colleagues put unions ahead of residents and rate payers. On this side of the chamber, we will always put residents first. While on the topic of Labor mistruths, one of Councillor Cassidy's favourite furfies is about the cost of our award-winning Brisbane Metro project. Brisbane Metro is the biggest public transport project ever undertaken by this council, with major infrastructure being delivered at over 10 sites across Brisbane. Now we hear Councillor Cassidy make claims about blowouts. He picks a different number every single week. It's true, the project budget has increased since its inception, Madam Chair. For example, electric vehicles weren't part of the original plan or budget. It was the Schrinner Council that had the foresight to future-proof the project with zero emissions vehicles. Councillor Cassidy also fails to mention the additional costs imposed on the project by the state government. Brisbane Metro has experienced market pressures. We've been open about that. But I defy anyone to name a project of this scale that hasn't faced these pressures in the past couple of years. The reality is, this project is critical to keep Brisbane moving into the future and we will deliver it and residents cannot wait and they will not be disappointed. The opposition's latest attack on Metro is the size of the fleet. The fleet that would be necessary to deliver the service at three-minute intervals. All of this proves is that if the, if those opposite had come into office in March, they would have cut Metro, they would have stopped it from becoming a true turn-up-and-go service that Brisbane residents truly need. They also attack our proposal to expand the benefits of Metro further into the northern suburbs. As we all know, Brisbane Metro went through a comprehensive business case process, considering the population, the patronage demand and growth across the whole of Brisbane, not just the south side. And importantly, council contributed years of work to the North West Transport Corridor business case, which considered potential transport infrastructure ideas for the area to help reduce traffic congestions. That business case found that a bus rapid transit would improve public transport reliability for bus services along the Gimpy Road corridor. It is simple logic that in order to run Brisbane Metro services on Gimpy Road, there needs to be a northern location for vehicles to be stabled at and charged. This provides the justification for our proposed depot. The state government has adopted that work and are progressing with our proposal for a tunnel beneath Gimpy Road. The tunnel would be complemented by better public transport access on the surface of Gimpy Road. We are seeing bipartisan support for a tunnel and we're working with all levels of government on the Brisbane Metro project. And we're currently in discussions with the state government regarding our transport contract. As part of this, we're working towards an agreement with the state government where we will deliver the depot and they complete their transitway and busway plans. This tired and out-of-touch opposition is really being left behind on Brisbane Metro and transport solutions for residents who live in the northern suburbs of Brisbane. Now, while it has been pleasing to see all the levels of government come together in some areas and in many others, local government and in particular Brisbane City Council is being left high and dry by George Street and Canberra. Whether it's the constant cost shifting on everything, from major transport infrastructure to childhood vaccinations and the regulation of botox clinics, or a complete lack of funding growth, Brisbane residents are increasingly being short-changed. Brisbane's share in the distribution of the financial assistance grants has fallen and funding available from the state government's SEQ Community Stimulus Programme has not increased since 2021, despite significant escalation in construction costs. And again, Brisbane was subject to an arbitrary funding cap of $7 million for this programme, while smaller councils like Gold Coast and Morton received more funding, $9.8 million in the case of the Gold Coast. When combined with the funding allocations from Phase Four of the federal LRCI programme, it paints a telling picture of the apparent contempt with which state and federal Labor hold Brisbane rate payers. Brisbane received $14 per resident from these programmes. This compared to $28 for the Gold Coast, $30 for Logan, $33 for Morton Bay, $34 for the Sunshine Coast, $41 for Ipswich and $48 for Redlands. Why is a resident in Boondle worth $14 when a resident in Bundle is worth $28? Why is a resident in Seven Hills worth $14 when a resident in Ferny Hills is worth $33? And why is a resident in Forest Lake worth $14 when a resident in Springfield Lakes is worth $41? These are the questions that we're asking on behalf of residents and if Labor councillors wanted to do something very practical for their city, they should be asking their Labor counterparts at the state and federal Labor, at the state and federal levels the exact same question. Madam Chair, in case anyone wasn't already clear, we now know for sure the plan that Labor took to the election on waste would have been a costly disaster. So I'm not surprised Councillor Cassidy didn't raise it at all today. Since 2022, we've been trialling fortnightly food waste recycling through green bins in select areas, with 13,000 households part of the trial across Brisbane. An analysis of the waste collected from the bins in the trial area found just 4% of what was collected was food waste, like vegetable scraps. At the same time, the cost to process this waste is nearly 20 times higher than the cost of processing garden organics alone. We will continue to do more to support residents to reduce their waste to landfill, including by providing generous rebates for home composting systems. However, it's clear the current trial needs to be paused while we undertake a detailed investigation into more effective and less costly solutions. Madam Chair, Councillor Cassidy had a big job ahead of him in delivering his budget reply today. It was the opportunity for him to provide some of the detail that was sorely lacking from his policy platform during the recent campaign. Because Labor talked a big game and they promised a lot of new spending. Today's speech was their chance to tell us in detail exactly where they would have found the $3.5 billion they needed to fund the election commitments of Labor and their coalition partners, the Greens. I was ready to hear where he was going to come up with the $744 million in extra road funding that he promised for the next financial year alone. I know he got Stephen Wiles to bail him out on the half-price bus fares commitment for six months at least. So, you know, that's something, but he had and he still has a long way to go. It's ridiculous, Madam Chair, that Councillor Cassidy comes in here every week complaining about how we're saving money to keep rates low and deliver on our modest and affordable collection, election commitments. But at the same time, Labor is silent on how they would pay for their own agenda. I genuinely held out hope we might have heard something more this morning, but they haven't come clean, so there's only one option. Labor and the Greens' big spending agenda would be paid for by every resident in Brisbane, pushing up rates and rents. Madam Chair, this budget marks the beginning of what will be an incredibly exciting 12 months for our city. It's where some of our signature initiatives and projects all come together. Of course, there is Brisbane Metro and the Kangaroo Point Bridge. But we'll also see the fruits of our investments in projects like the Archerfield Wetlands Precinct and Murray Recreation Reserve. As will a third of our year of programme, as will, we've, we will also finalise the third year of our programme to put shade over every suburban playground in Brisbane. We'll be setting in motion the next group of our suburban road, road projects in line with our election commitments, with significant investment in planning and design for congestion busting upgrades, which will get residents home sooner and safer. We'll also undertake a global search for the best technology available to move people as efficiently as possible as we progress a major upgrade for Brisbane's traffic management system. Madam Chair, the leader of the opposition has been at pains to tell residents that everything in council is bad. But the experience in the community does not match his gloomy and over-the-top rhetoric. The real problem he has is that he and his team haven't been able to convince residents that making sensible savings in a cost-of-living crisis is a bad idea. This budget is all about living within our means. By making sensible savings to keep the budget balanced, we're able to reduce the burden on our households. It's a simple message, but one Councillor Cassidy still can't get his head around. Residents backed and continue to back the Schrinner Council's sensible approach. Now, it would be remiss of me not Now, it would be remiss of me not to take this opportunity to say a few thank yous, Madam Chair. Firstly, Lord Mayor, thank you for your continued strong leadership of our city, its council and our team. To the acting C E O Tim Wright and Organisational Services Divisional Manager Anne Lenz, thank you for your leadership and your support. To Chief Financial Officer Mark Russell, supported by Sandra Bridgman, Emma McCarthy and Elizabeth West and the entire corporate finance team, thank you so much for your tireless, really tireless efforts and dedication. Thank you especially to my policy adviser Dean and also all the staff in the Lord Mayor's office, especially Michael, Stephen and Ruth, for all your support through this budget process. I am so proud to have been part of the development of this budget for Brisbane and along with my rest of my team Schriner colleagues, I commit to the residents of Brisbane, we will work hard every single day to deliver for you and this city that we love. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, councillor Cunningham. Lord Mayor, may I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Madam Chair, I move that this meeting be adjourned until nine A M on Wednesday, the nineteenth of June, twenty twenty four, to allow for programme information sessions to be held later today and on Monday, the seventeenth of June, twenty twenty four, on budget programmes.
Second.
It has been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the deputy mayor that this meeting be adjourned until nine A M on Wednesday, nineteenth of June, twenty twenty four, to allow for programme information sessions to be held later today and on Monday, the seventeenth of June, twenty twenty four, on the budget programmes. All those in favour say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it. This meeting now stands adjourned until nine A M on Wednesday, the nineteenth of June, twenty twenty four.